Morning.
My name is Don Prosser and as President of the Carbon Library Board, I've determined it would be not prudent to try to hold an in-person board meeting in view of the COVID-19 problem and the governor's ruling. Then accordingly, this meeting will be held virtually. It is being recorded. At this point, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland here, Julian?
Here.
Phil?
Here.
Joyce?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Chastity?
Here.
Harriet? And for reference, Don, may I not keep calling Harriet for further votes?
Absolutely. There's no reason to do that. First item on the agenda is the president's report. That is simply that I'm here. Now that brings us down to the secretary's reports and you have the January 13 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to be noted?
I just have one small one in the secretary's report. I think you should include Susan's last name and my last name, please.
Anything else?
What do you mean, Barbara? Everyone knows us.
I know.
Kidding. I'm just kidding.
Maybe we should leave that out. You're right, Susan.
I think we should go with nicknames.
Ooh, I like that.
Well, there aren't a possibilities there, but I'm afraid we have to stick with the rules. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Don, move.
Seconded.
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay.
Brown?
Any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland? Yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is correspondence and communications. Do we have anything in that regard?
Yeah.
Move on then to financial report. Gwen sent out bills payable a few minutes before ago. Is there any discussion on that or questions about it before we get to a motion? If not, is there a motion to approve the bill's payable?
Yes.
Move. Second.
Discussion? Call roll.
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland? Yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yeah.
Barbara?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
That motion carries. We have a financial report for January of 2021. Is there a motion to approve its acceptance?
I move. I move. We have the financial report for December 2021.
Is it December or January?
I think it's January.
Yeah, there we go.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it. It's as of last Friday is basically what it is.
Right.
Okay.
Any discussion or questions?
I have a question on the balance sheet.
Uh huh.
Uh, we have a negative $993 in petty cash.
Yeah, I think I was just in the middle of entering things when I did that, so it's been corrected by now.
Okay.
Entering checks or something like that, and I'd already done the transfer into the bank account. Because we've been balancing the drawer, I think, once a week instead of every day because we've been bringing in so much less money. So I think things are just behind sometimes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments?
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland? Yes.
Julian? Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
Motion carries. We've received a final FY22 budget for your review. It was forwarded to you. Great questions before we have a motion to approve.
Very little that was changed in the budget from the preliminary to now. Just that we are getting a lot less interest from Illinois funds because of the bond market. So that affected our projections for the current fiscal year and for the next fiscal year. It doesn't change our bottom line. I adjusted a couple of other income items on just our projections for FY21. But, and added a $5,000 grant that we got, that we've received for FY21. So everything that's different in there is really, really minor. And we're in good shape for both years in terms of staying in the black.
Yeah, I called and spoke to Illinois funds and they basically said that 2018 and 2019 were really good years for bonds. And then it's just kind of back to normal. So we had quite good interest last year. We based this year's budget on and then it just went back. So I guess it's just the way it is.
Got to go on with GameStop.
I have a question. I noticed that in the financial report that we've been, or 130% of our projected cost to pay unemployment insurance. Has that been adjusted for the coming budget? And if so, what's that all about?
We don't think it's going to go, that it's going to remain high for the coming budget. We're paying off a past unemployment claim right now. So it's difficult to know when, how much that affects your unemployment and when you're paid off. But we don't anticipate that it will remain high in the future.
Yeah, last year they changed it in December and they haven't adjusted it yet. So I might call them, but I thought maybe it was because unemployment's gone so off for Illinois this year that maybe it's just delayed. So I'm expecting an adjustment.
Well, it's pretty well known that the unemployment offices has got, be set with lots of fraud claims and whatever. I'm sure that's distracted them from trying to get back to you.
Yeah, we had a fraud claim for unemployment here at the library too. So yeah, it's everywhere.
Well, I can recite that I was supposedly, I was unemployed too. So at least somebody thought I was. Anyway, it turned out not to be true. Okay, is there a motion to approve the final budget?
I've got a couple of little things that are just, like, on the first page, the mission statement and so on, in the middle where it says, "Improve resources." The first couple of lines there are run together. Ensure compliance as well as enlightened, blah, blah, the library board will review. Sounds like there should be a break there. Semicolon or period or something.
Okay.
Can you see what I mean?
Yeah, so you said the first couple of bullet points are just that first bullet.
Just the first bullet.
If you insert the word "with" after, "as well as," I think that'll take care of it.
Okay.
And then on the next page, partway down, it's talking about the social work intern. It says, "Partnership with SIU." And I wonder if the first time you mentioned that, if it should be spelled out, S-I-U. Will other readers know what that is if they're not local?
Well, we've got S-I-H and STEM and all sorts of other acronyms.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, we're just, the important thing is to be consistent with style. So if we're going to do it for one, we probably need to do it for all. But I don't know if we really want to do that.
This is a, this is a report that it's required by the city and they, they like it short.
It's the city. I think you're okay.
Yeah. In double A-C.
Anything else that you wanted to raise, Roland?
No.
With Roland's correction, is there a motion to approve the final budget?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Call or roll?
Don?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland? Yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
That motion carries. Where's your report, Diana?
All right, you're on to me. Um, well, we had a little incident yesterday that we have every year or so with the bathroom. But we got that taken care of. We have to have the the city come and vacuum out underneath the manholes in our parking lot and up against our building. So we dealt with that for a couple of hours yesterday because it backs up into the restroom. But we got that taken care of. Josh is working on sanding down and then refinishing all of the thin wooden rails that go along our ramp and all across balcony. He's refinishing all that wood, so it'll look nice. And we are, we have got two things that we're looking into right now. They talked a little bit about this last time. The Ameren came, they asked, they consulted with Josh about our energy consumption. And they will give us about $7,000 to get a new boiler. And we just have to run a natural gas line to it, which is, that's good to go. They're going to go ahead and do that. That's only going to cost us probably about $200 to run the gas lines. We're not, we're still waiting on quotes for what the boiler will cost. So we're not sure, but we do know that we'll get about $7,000 covered of the cost. And then that should help our energy consumption to go on, to go down. Because the boiler that we have is electronic and it's, it's pretty inefficient. They, comparable to using a toaster instead of an oven. So that should help making that.
How old is that boiler?
It's original to the building. I know, so 1983. So that should help. And then we also did have somebody come in and give us, do a little bit of work as far as figuring out whether or not we could convert to solar by putting solar on top of the brush building, empowering both the brush building and the library with it, which is very doable. And we could put enough solar up there to power a lot more than we could if we had just used the library roof, which doesn't have a whole lot of room on it. So that's a possibility. So we are waiting for more information about what that would cost and what some of the financial incentives and things like that might be so that we could figure out whether or not that might be an affordable option for us to do. And how much energy we might, what that might do to our energy bill and what the installation costs might be. So, and what other municipalities are doing. So we'll have some information about whether or not that would be a feasible cost or not. It would reduce our bills and our energy consumption. So that's it for building and grounds. Our COVID-19 procedures right now are that we, we did have a meeting with the emergency policy committee. And right now we are doing appointment only. We do one appointment every 20 minutes in order to spread out people as they're coming in. So we do a sign-in process with them. We ask them a series of questions, make sure they don't have COVID, remind them they have to wear their mask. And it's been pretty steady. Initially, we were doing one at the top and bottom of each hour. So we changed it to one every 20 minutes so we could get people in more easily. We do curbside service as well. And if someone just knocks on the door and just wants to walk in real quick and grab like their tax forms, we let them do that. So it's been, it's been working fairly well. It certainly isn't probably as good as swinging the doors open. But, but we do feel we're safe. We're not having to argue with people about wearing a mask. And we don't have people piled on top of each other. So we're keeping our staff and our public safe. The staff has been, we've been categorized as 1C when it comes to getting shots. So we have to get through all of 1B first before we qualify for shots. We have, you know, maybe one staff member who fits into category 1B. So when they get to 1C and everybody who wants a shot can get a shot, then I feel a lot more comfortable opening the doors. But I do welcome your thoughts on whether you think we're doing the right thing on that, right now. So that's, that's my, my, my report on COVID. The only other thing I would report to you at the moment is just that we have, we did get that $5,000 grant that I just mentioned. That is for a project called the Mentorship Project. It's from Illinois Humanities. And I've also applied for additional funding from the Carbondale Rotary Foundation and from Healing Illinois. And that's a project that we're doing in partnership with Carbondale United to take six African-American men and put them into, in through training on on conflict resolution, restorative practices. And then to do a series of programs with young boys from Southern Illinois who are at risk of exposure to gun violence. So that they can create a mentorship relationship, someone who those boys could reach out to if they feel that they're in trouble. And also just to, you know, give them the opportunity to envision themselves as adults who are succeeding to learn some communication skills that may help them. And to have some enjoyable programs. So we were getting rolling with that. The communities are Carbondale, Marion and Caro. Because in our work with Carbondale United, we've discovered that there are connections there between violence that happens in Carbondale and violence that happens in Caro in particular. And we have cooperation from community leaders and the schools in each of those communities. So it should be something that we can pull off. That project will go through October. And our hope is ultimately that we would like to see it become a cure violence initiative or at least the proving ground to allow Carbondale to initiate something like that. Cure Violence is a scientifically proven program that treats violence as an epidemic. So one of the aspects of a cure violence program is that there are violence interrupters that people can call on if they need them. But also that show up if you have a shooting incident, for example. They will show up at the hospital, just as rape crisis intervention counselors will show up. If there's been a sexual assault, they'll go to the hospital. In the case of a violence interrupter, they would go and they would speak to anyone who had been affected by that violence. They would try to help people to process what they're going through and to stave off any, any impulse to exact revenge. The Carbondale Police Department and the, the Joe Cervantes, the new state's attorney are also looking at similar types of initiatives. So I do think that there is some, some will within our community to actually enact something like that. So, so that's what that grant is for. And I think it's an exciting opportunity. So.
What is the plan for recruiting those six individuals?
We have potential names of six to eight people already. So we'll be giving, reaching out to them with a survey, asking, you know, what their, what their willingness is to participate and what they bring to the table. It's very important to find people who, who the boys can relate to, who've had similar experiences in their lives. Because, you know, we've had youth come to some of our meetings and basically tell us that, that, you know, it doesn't do any good to sit somebody in front of me who just tells me it's going to be okay. I need to put somebody in front of me who understands the kind of danger I live in and, and has survived it. And so it's, it's very important they'd be able to see themselves in these people. So that's, that's the idea. So we're.
Is there any percentage of females involved or is it all?
We've written this, we've written this grant as a grant that's targeted to young men. Yeah, we would like to probably expand this program and do it again with both boys and with girls. But right now, I think the real risk is, is that we're seeing actual violence. Or, you know, this started initially, Carbondale United started because of the death of a teen in our community. And so we really want to aim right at where the problem lies, which tends to be with the boys. And, and then expand it to the girls. Because yes, there are girls who are at risk who go through these things as well. But, you know, given limited resources, it kind of felt important to go right at, you know, right towards the problem and right, right to the kids who need the most help. So Chastity's been involved with Carbondale United to some extent with these issues as well. So I don't know if Chastity, if you want to add anything?
No, I, I think it's really important to start with the boys because they are where the problem is. The girls more follow, follow behind the boys. And it's, there's not too many boys, girls who are at risk. I think it's important that if you continue the program, yes, include them. But I think to start with the boys is where you should start for sure.
Thanks. And that's it for my report. Any questions?
Well, I have a question. We're scheduled to have, in a few minutes, we're going to approve the minutes of the emergency policy committee, that meeting. And it, it resides that we're going to have a meeting next week. Do we still want to have that meeting or not?
Um, well, that's a good question. I, I mean, we certainly can. We could also just discuss that here. I think kind of the conclusion, you know, that, that the group felt at our last meeting was, you know, we wanted to see our staff vaccinated before we open up fully. But if you, if you want to revisit that, if you feel comfortable having a meeting, I'd be happy to, for us to have a meeting next week.
What's the feeling of the board?
I don't really feel the need for another one at this point. I think when you feel you have a problem or a concern, you could certainly contact us and we could put something together quickly, but.
Have you had complaints that you're not completely open?
No, I don't, I don't feel like we've had complaints. But Gwen, you're probably answering the phone a lot more than I am.
I wouldn't say complaints, but I have heard phrases like, "Are you finally going to be open?" But I wouldn't say they were complaining. It was more, but I have heard phrases like that, like they thought we would be open before now. But that was when we started taking appointments too. Now that we're open to not just computer appointments, I don't, I haven't heard any complaints.
Yeah.
Positivity rate has been below 5% now for about five days. And if it continues, then I think it's, you know, as soon as the staff can be vaccinated, I think it's, would be the right time. You know, even with that low positivity rate, you know, until, until you get vaccinated, nobody's going to be completely safe.
I think, Phil, that's exactly the way the committee felt, that we were anxious to be providing service to the public, but we didn't want to have staff be in a position where their health was compromised, which is your point.
Yeah.
I don't really think a lot has changed in terms of, I guess there's a little, we now can go to restaurants, I suppose. Other than that, that's about the only real change since the last time we met. And for that reason, I questioned whether there'd be anything for us to discuss. I would say this, Diana, if something changes and from your perspective, I'd like you to call our meeting. But I think we can forego the February, what's she?
16.
13th, is that right?
16, thanks.
16, yeah, 16.
Now, the vaccine is not instantaneous. You're about 50% protected after the first shot within a couple of three weeks. And after the second shot, Moderna or Pfizer is about in the 90% again, about two to three weeks after that vaccination.
Yeah, so we may want to take that into account and not just be like, everybody got vaccinated yesterday. Let's throw open the doors. That might be where a decision needs to be made. So I, I'm hoping that we will get to that vaccine soon. I know that the, that the National Guard is coming down here. And they're also bringing their own supply of vaccinations. So they'll be at the arena five days a week. And that should happen soon, like within the next couple of weeks. One thing that I asked yesterday, I'm on the Sih Community Advisory Board. And I asked them if they knew, it seems like, it seems that Southern Illinois is doing actually a better job than a lot of other more populated areas of the state. And so I asked if we, if we get to the point where we can get to stage 1C, is the state going to allow us regionally to go to that point before the entire state goes to that point? And they did not know. That's probably a good question for our health department and it might be something we have to advocate for. But it does seem that, that we're ahead of the game down here. I know in the metro east, they've not finished, they've not vaccinated their teachers. And a lot of the metro east area, and our teachers have been vaccinated. So and from what I hear, smaller counties are doing, you know, are managing it better because they have fewer people to manage. So so yeah, I hope they'll get to 1C as well. And there are a lot of vulnerable people in 1C, people with, you know, who have health issues but are younger. So they're in 1C. So are the grocery store workers. I think the sooner we can get there.
Restaurant servers and.
I think we would be much, much farther ahead if the vaccines were available. I think that we are being hampered by the lack of supply. Because when I went and got my shot, I talked to the volunteers and they said they, they were doing about 700, 800 people a day. They were doing about seven, eight hundred people a day. But they're hampered by the fact that they're limited and the, the amount of doses they're getting.
I think we can expect, only expect that to improve. And I, you know, I understand that it's been a. Kind of a crap shoot otherwise, but I, I think things are, we, we can expect things to, to function a little. More efficiently in the coming weeks.
Trying to get an appointment is like the Hunger Games.
Yeah. Somebody says like the, trying to win the lottery.
Well, I do know that. I think we've, we've also updated our website a little bit, you know, with some advice in this direction, but. That it's. You can go, you can call Walgreens and Kroger now. You don't have to go through the Health Department. And, and from, from what I'm hearing, just colloquially on the street is that it will be, it's a little faster. Of course, that probably changes from week to week depending on who happens to have gotten a shipment of vaccines, but. But there are more locations now that you can go to. So that'll, that should help. And I've also, it, it was that you, people were clicking on the Health Department link and it just said no appointments available. And they maybe had better luck if they called on the phone. So. I hate to say that because I think there's only a couple of people who work at the Health Department. You know, they're having the hardest.
Well, I did a rough on the back, an envelope calculation. The number of doses that Walgreens and those stores are getting. Amounts would be like about 160 doses per store across the country. So, you know.
Yeah.
You know, when you're looking at a country, 335 million people and you're talking about, you know, a million doses, that's nothing, you know?
Yeah. I know. So. Well, that is it for my report. We just have to do those minutes and I don't have any paper, patron behavior to report.
Well, under committee reports, the agenda says we need to approve the minutes of the January 19. 2021 Emergency Policy Committee minutes. I'll move their approval.
Second.
I do have a couple of questions about those minutes, if I may. One, there's one sentence in there Diana that I, I simply cannot read and understand and it's. Having spoken with several staff members, that sentence. Gets to, but to expand appointment purposes from non-entertainment, computer use and social work only. To book browsing and book browsing any other, is there a word missing there somewhere?
Probably. Hold on. Having spoken with several staff members. Comma. Director's proposal is to continue with curbside and appointment only service. But to expand appointment purposes from non-entertainment, computer use and social work only. To book browsing and.
An and or or in there?
Right. And any other limited use of the library. Yeah, I think there's an and and a comma missing.
Okay. And then one small thing, and that is a comma. If you put a comma, the sentence beginning, if the demand is too high to meet, comma. I read it first, if the demand is too high to meet the director. So if you put the comma in. Would take care of that.
Okay.
Any other comments or corrections? Call or roll to approve the minutes as corrected.
Khan?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Roland, yes. Julian?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Chastity?
Yes.
At most carries. You've already reported that we don't have any. Patron behavior. I don't think there's any, is there any unfinished business anyone wants to bring up? Or any new business?
Question for Susan, is Morris now fully open?
Unfortunately, yes. We are open. Technically, we say the stacks are closed, but there's no way to prevent people from getting to the stacks. We're still trying to encourage people to let us pull books for you. You know, if you go to the stacks and pull a book and bring it up to the desk, they will begrudgingly check it out to you. But, because you might be carrying COVID. So that's why they don't want to touch. I mean, I don't think we've had a lot of, I mean, we've had students in there. I mean, the most number of people we've had in there has been like 42. Over eight floors, but we still have a number of people. Who aren't good about complying with the mask. You know, they'll come in, they've got the mask on, they go to a different floor and. It starts to slide down. So we remind them. We've, we have asked, I think, at least two students, maybe three to leave. Because they have been told they needed to, you know, wear their mask and. They were, they were told repeatedly. So then they were just told to pack up their stuff and leave and they could try again tomorrow.
Well, you have a security system if you have to call it, but that's an advantage you have. You could call campus security if they don't cooperate.
Well, that, it depends upon what it is they're not doing. Believe it or not. Yeah.
Is there a protocol for that?
Yes. In fact, that's what I spent most of the day working on today was a procedure for how to move forward and. When you can kick, I mean, when you can call campus police versus referring the student to student rights and responsibility. I mean, we're experts on dealing with community people who come in and misbehave. Students go sort of a different route. You have to go through the dean of students. Before you can sort of move on and they work with campus police. It's been a great.
You probably never have any problems with students though, right?
No, never. But we did close at five o'clock today. That was our big excitement because of the weather.
Very good.
Yeah.
Susan, are you open tomorrow?
We won't know till tomorrow morning. You'll see it running across the TV screen at the same time I do probably.
Said I was trying to figure out about tomorrow as well. It's hard to say what the road conditions are gonna be, but Johnny Logan closed, so.
Oh, really? They already did?
Yeah.
Well, my big, we're supposed to get our vaccines tomorrow and I'm hoping they don't shut that down.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
I think that's the close of business. We'll close this meeting in the journey. Our next meeting is March 10, I believe.
Yes, it is. Yay.